Good evening, welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, and it's 6:35 in the evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting this evening. Let the record show that the council is all present. I can see them all. And for the public, we're going to, we're doing a joint council and planning commission update on the transportation system plan. We're not making any decisions, but this is an information update. After that is done, which will be about half an hour or so, we'll go into the regular meeting, which will go minutes, and then we'll do visitor and public comment at that point. So we're going to start right now. I'm going to turn it over to Fred, and he's going to lead us in this portion of the presentation. So Mr. Evander, please continue.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So hey, council, hey, planning commission. Nice to be with you folks tonight. It seems like just, I don't know, maybe a couple of weeks where we had Matt Bell, our consultant on the TSP, the transportation system plan on with us to sort of discuss some of the bigger projects that we're thinking about, sort of give an overview of the plan, where we're at. We are getting near the end of this thing. The planning commission is going to hold a public hearing on it, hopefully on June 14th, and then that will come then before the council in your late July meetings. So we are really nearing adoption on this thing, on this plan. And so what you will see tonight is some of the big ideas from the plan, some of the concepts in it. So what I would encourage you to do is if you have questions about it, if you have thoughts about some of the projects that you see, if you have questions about any of the dollar amounts that you see, please ask them now, because sort of getting those out sooner rather than later is going to be helpful in just the whole adoption process. So, so that's really what we're hoping to achieve tonight. We do have Matt Bell on the line, who is from Kittleson and Associates, who is going to walk us through the presentation. Jason, I do think that he is going to need to screen share. So if you could do that, that would be ideal. But Matt, go ahead and take it away.
Great. Thanks, everybody for having me. And if you give me just a quick second here, I can make sure that I've got everything situated and ready to just pass right into sharing my screen. Let's see. Can everybody see my screen? Okay. Great. Sorry, I didn't mean to start there at the end. All right. Well, like, like Fred said, we have, we have a presentation here. This is largely modeled after a presentation that we just gave to our technical and community advisory committee last week. So it's a little bit on the longer side. So I'm going to go through things kind of quick. I won't spend a lot of time on slides, but please feel free to jump in with any questions or comments. And definitely want to save as much time as we have at the end to talk about stuff. So I'll just skip through that. This is a, this is a schedule that we've been using to kind of keep track of the, keep track of the project. See, we kicked things off back in January. We're now in the, in the March through May time period, working on the draft TSP update as well as the implementing ordinances. Moving into the June and July timeframe, we are still anticipating going into adoption. So this project, the transportation system plan was guided by a series of technical memos. Most of you have seen several of these technical memos, tech memos, one through six, got us to essentially the bulk of the content that gets filtered right into the TSP. And then the implementing ordinances is something that we do to make sure that the TSP just gets, is consistent with other plans and policies and things. So we've also had several meetings with, with both of our advisory committees, as well as with the, with the general public through a series of open houses. Something that's not reflected on this particular slide is, is the YouTube live events that we held following our last two virtual open houses, both of which I felt like went really well, and we got a lot of positive feedback and just comments during the, during the events themselves that we were able to incorporate into those, into those particular plans. So we are right here at the Joint Planning Commission City Council work session number two. We do only have two meetings left to go. So as far as the, the TSP update goes, it's, we're, we're going to just again, talk about something we talked a little bit about perhaps during our last joint work session, which is just a handful of the real key elements of the, of the draft TSP update. These are, these are elements that were introduced to us whenever we've actually initially kicked off this project. Some of these issues were things that we were identified right off the bat as being really important to the community, in particular, the east-west, north-south connectivity, looking for opportunities to improve that throughout the city, improving key connections. And when we say key connections, largely what we're referring to there are some of the key intersections throughout the community. Next, we have enhancing bike and pedestrian infrastructure on major streets and establishing a low-stress transportation network. That is essentially just making things more comfortable for people to walk and bike, the access transit. Next is improving access of the transit and transit services. So one thing that we certainly haven't shared with you guys before is what we would consider to be the cost-constrained plan. So in the overall planning process, we have what would be the preferred plan. That's all the projects that we would, we've identified throughout the entire planning process to address all the gaps, deficiencies, needs and things throughout the community over, over the life of the, the city. But the cost-constrained plan is what we feel like could, is our projects that we feel like really need to be done over the next 20-year timeframe and can, can reasonably be done within the existing funding that's available, as well as other funding sources like grants and things like that. So the, at this point, the, the total is shown there. We have a, a large chunk of the roadway improvement projects. Is that, is that southern east-west arterial that's shown down here on the map? A small handful of safety and transit-related projects, a good number of bike and pedestrian projects, the bike projects, the reason why that total is as big as it is, is because a lot of those have to do with widening the, widening the roadways to, to provide the full width of the travel lanes and on-street bike lanes. So it's not just about painting symbols and things on the roads. Next, we have a good number of sidewalks that we want to try to fill in. And then I think something we talked about last time was the need to elevate the need for a parking study in the downtown area. So our cost-constrained plan, there's, it has a total value of about 18.3 million. And again, this is what we would anticipate being fundable within that 20-year timeframe.
Excuse me, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Did you say that the parking line there is a study?
That's correct. Yeah, something, something that we set out to do as part of the TSP was to identify some potential opportunities to improve parking conditions in the downtown area, as well as in different pockets of the community. And I think that through the process, we, there was some, we, we shared some, we shared some ideas and had some discussions about it. And I think in the end, what people felt more comfortable with was going through and doing a more comprehensive review of what the parking needs might be and developing a more integrated strategy for, for the downtown. So that's a, that's why there's a study there. All right. So the prefer, I mentioned before, the preferred plans, we have the preferred and cost-constrained plans. The, the preferred is the, the overall there and the total bill being about $64.7 million. That's again, that's everything, every gap deficiency and need that we identified in the community. And includes a lot of the wishlist items that we, that we heard about aspirational type projects that we heard about along the way. The, the cost-constrained plan as it showed previously is largely just falls into this high priority category. And we have text that sort of supports this table and describes this a little bit better in the TSP itself. So jumping into the, some of those critical elements, again, trying to boost east-west, north-south connectivity. We have three ways that we're looking, or four ways that we're looking at doing that. One is, is providing, making some changes to the city's functional classification plan, providing new major street collectors or connections. These are both on the collector and arterial level, adding in new local street connections and then establishing freight and farm equipment routes. So I'll go through these kind of quick, but the maps illustrate what, what we're essentially trying to do. And I'll just highlight for you, for folks that may not already be aware, is today Gun Club Road is actually classified as the minor arterial and 16th is classified as a collector, as, as well as Talmage. Talmage is, is a, is a major collector within the county's classification. And I believe a local street up here to the north. So it's, it's a little, it's kind of a mixed match, but if you guys are, which I'm sure you are well familiar with this network. Tell me, six, the 16th and Talmage combined provide some of the, some of the largest, the largest level of connectivity in this, in this area with, maybe with the exceptions of 51 and 99 further to the west. So when we looked at the system, we felt like 16th and Talmage, it made more sense to be a minor arterial. That's, and, and after identifying that as minor arterial, of course, we, we heard from, from everybody about the fact that there are schools on these streets that, that, that these streets are largely owned by other jurisdictions like Monmouth and, and Polk County, and that we, that we need to be making sure that we're, we're aware of all that and communicating about all that. So this is, I think this is an area that we still feel like we need some, some guidance on and are looking for direct feedback from, we, we were asking for this type of feedback during our advisory committee meetings. And of course, tonight as well. Some of the other easier ones are just shown with, with, as, as largely as they are today. I, I think that the biggest change is really between Gun Club and 16th. And, and then just sort of codifying what we already knew about Mount Fur down here. And then a lot of these other east-west streets, north-south streets down in the southwest concept area.
So I have a question, please.
Yeah.
On F Street, that is where the bridge is by, by Inspiration Garden. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is it going to remain on F Street?
The bridge?
The bridge. The reason I'm asking is because it shows D Street or G Street, excuse me, is the collector and heading to the west, but there is, as far as I know, no bridge planned over G Street.
That's, that's correct. So something that is identified in this plan is to make G Street this, there's, there's always been this, G Street has always been a collector and from, or as far back as I am, as far back as I know. And this connection over here to Madrona Street that was identified on the southwest concept plan was also identified as a collector. And so we were just, we were just looking, seeing an opportunity to connect those two streets. And the largest barrier there, of course, being, being Ash Creek. And, and we have heard from folks concerned about the, in Inspiration Gardens and the potential impact that extending G Street over, over the, over the gardens or over the creek and into that like former, it's either, it's like sort of, sort of an industrial yard at this point.
Right.
Into that, into that property there is, yeah, that's, that's all, all kind of baked into this and kind of thought through some of those issues. But it's, it's really just looking to provide that continuous east-west connection between 51 and 16, and also providing a continuous connection into Monmouth along the street that's identified as a collector and their TSP as well.
Thank you.
So maybe just, just spending another minute on this slide, the, any, any strong feelings about 16th as a, as a minor arterial as opposed to Gun Club Road as a collector or vice versa?
Make another comment. I think it's a great idea because Gun Club, which I live off of, is getting extremely busy with all the new housing. And it would be nice to see that more major arterial going down 16th.
Matt, can you just briefly define what a collector and arterial is?
Yeah, so you think that would be a straightforward question that the, I think that the, when I think about these, when I think about the differences between those two streets, I think about a collector. In a lot of ways, collector are, you know, just, just like it sounds, is, is collecting traffic from neighborhood streets and filtering it on to the arterial streets. And so in that way, and so, and then a collector versus an arterial is going to have less stringent access spacing standards, less stringent, or, and, and maybe you may see more private driveways, you might see like less traffic and shorter distance connections. And sometimes when you see like minor collectors versus major collectors, minor arteries versus major arteries, it's like, as you work your way up the classifications from minor to major collector to arterial, you see sort of the, the, the accesses spacing getting longer, the, the general connectivity getting longer, traffic volumes, travel speeds, those things kind of getting higher. And so when I see 16th again, 16th and Talmage, you put it all together and it has that long, that longer connection and fairly continuous connection throughout that. It, it feels more like a minor arterial to me today than Gun Club Road does. Even when you get up to Hoffman and you see the separate left and right turn lanes there and kind of the widening at the intersection as opposed to what's going on at Gun Club and Hoffman today. The way that 16th crosses over Monmouth versus the way that Gun Club, even though we do have this little S curve in here, the way Gun Club would eventually need to be realigned or teed up at 13th somehow to provide that same level of connectivity. And even then, it's not going to go all the way through. It's going to connect in here and eventually tie into the arterial below. So there's, there's, I guess, I've been beating around about your question. Your question is really, what are the differences? And the difference is really just is, is access and connectivity.
You, you could kind of think of it as like a circulatory system in your body. You know, you got the capillaries that sort of get the, get to the specialized areas. Those are like the local streets, and then you've got the arteries that move the, the major amounts of blood right through your body. Those are like the arterials. And then the collector is like somewhere in between, sort of envisioning it that way. So the, the arteries are like the arterials and 16th and, and main are really the two main north-south routes that we have through town right now. And this is just a recognition of that.
Oh, thank you, Fred.
Well, I don't want to totally put this one away, but I want to move on a little bit. If you guys have more questions about it, happy to talk about it. So for major street connections of this, I'll cycle back and forth between this slide and the next one. The, the new major street connections are largely just shown in these, these dash lines. Includes that new east-west connection that's down there by Mountain Fur. I mentioned before, the extension to Madrona Street and Gwynne Street. That's this Madrona Street, that's this, this Gwynne Street coming out of Monmouth there. We have 13th going further to the south, Chestnut connecting into the, the new extensions and Fourth Street also connecting further to the south. So we have Chestnut coming over here and Fourth Street coming down over here. Wrong way. We also have a series of new local street connections, and this was the first rendition of the map that most people saw. The second version has a little less in terms of connectivity, and this is in part just to sort of acknowledge that Talmage being a minor arterial will have, have less local street connections on it than, than what is shown, that the collectors would be the ones that would provide the more local street connectivity. So you see, we've got them coming off of Mountain Fur Avenue and coming off of Talmage Road here and really just staying on all the collector streets there. We also have a couple more further up to the north that aren't shown on this little map here, but those are. It certainly doesn't limit the opportunity for additional local street connections in the community. These are just ones that we wanted to make sure that we emphasize that are part of newer street connections. Lastly, freight and farm equipment routes. Oh, there it is down there. So this is really just, again, just kind of codifying existing practices and making sure that we, we emphasize this by, by establishing these preferred routes through the community. And right now, this is largely handled just by, just by the, the way that the downtown is designed, is, is preventing trucks from, well, it should theoretically be preventing trucks from coming in and out of downtown area, particularly ones that want to come south on 51 and west and continue west to Monmouth. So here we have them, we have trucks coming down 51 and hanging a left on Polk and vice versa, coming off Polk and hanging a left on, and I said left, but I meant right, but taking a left back onto Main Street. And this, this comes with some, the need for improvements at, at this, this key intersection right here, obviously, because we've heard that things can back up here when there's trucks. And we do have projects here, we'll talk about in a second. We also want to try to emphasize, de-emphasize Striker as, as, as a, as a route for some of these trucks, even though we recognize that there is some, some natural connections coming out of some of these industrial areas on the Striker. We want to send more traffic down this way and up 51 than up here on Striker. This intersection is, has some operational issues and, and we want to try to pull as much of that traffic as we can down here. So some of those new connections that I was talking about are generally down in this area.
How do you, how do you de-emphasize that, the use of Striker?
It's a couple of ways. One, one way is just where we, where we allow the, where we allow the new street connections and, and where we, we could use signage and some, and then establishing this as a traffic signal would hopefully also emphasize that as, as the preferred route. Because even trucks are going to come up here and they're going to have a hard time making a left onto 51. So if we have a traffic signal down here, which I'll talk about here in a second, trucks coming off of Striker down to Polk and up, up here onto 51, hopefully is the, the, will become the preferred route. And so, so we really, the, these routes are on 51 Hoffman and Polk down on 16th Talmage. And then it's showing over here, it's, it's kind of off the map at this point, but down off of Corvallis Road and then the new mountain for east-west arterial to the south. All right. I mentioned some of these new connections, and I, I know I got to pick up the pace here, so I apologize. I'll, I'll step on the gas here. Some of the, some of the key connections, we talked a lot about Main and Monmouth Street and the need for both a near-term and a kind of a longer-term solution. In the, the near-term, we really just want to focus on improving the, the greater, the larger street connections in, in the area. And in the longer term, we, we may want to, we, we may still need to provide some additional improvements such as left, right turn lanes and a, and a traffic signal. We did, we did bump this out to outside of the, outside of the financially constrained plan, based on some of our previous conversations and also based on wanting to roll the southern arterial in there. So when the southern arterial comes in, in the, within that, within that 20-year timeframe, a lot of the issues that we see at this intersection, as well as other intersections on Monmouth Street, are significantly reduced just because the amount of volume we do expect down in that, to utilize that corridor. So we've got some other intersections. I mentioned, I mentioned Main and Polk, Main and Polk. Right now, we have this identified as a, as a signal with a left turn lane. Based on feedback from ODOT, we need, we can't be that specific. So it's going to be the actual project that'll show up in the TSP is, is, is going to be some sort of a traffic control vice, a device, either a signal or, or roundabout, even though we, we sort of wrote off around about a while back, based on the right-of-way impacts and other impacts in this area. Next, we have Main Street and River Road. Yeah, still think it's River Road. This, this, um, this intersection is, is, as, as you guys are all well aware, has, has a handful of operational issues in and of itself. We also took a near-term, long-term approach with this. One of the, one of the, one of the important fixes out here is some sort of a left or right turn lane on, on the bridge. The challenge there is that the, the bridge is still in pretty good shape, and it's going to be a waste before they're going to want to make any significant modifications there. So we actually get to inadequate operations by showing a southbound left turn or by providing a left down, south, southbound left turn pocket and converting it to an always stop control. That buys us enough capacity to make it through the 20-year timeframe without any significant issues out there. This configuration, I think somebody asked during our last advisory committee meetings, what this looks like in terms of volumes and queues and things. And it does actually improve queues on the bridge and, and in, that doesn't make them significantly longer in the other direction. So this is still moving forward as the, the project there. Last one here is Fourth Street, Seventh Street. This, this, these, both these intersections were, were shown to have some operational issues over that 20-year timeframe. With the southern arterial in place, those issues are largely diminished. And so rather than having things like traffic signals out there, we were feeling like this configuration with a, with a, with a center turn lane to provide folks a place to stop, wait to make a left onto the minor street or potentially make two-stage left turns off the minor street onto, onto the highway there. This is pretty common. You guys have these all over, all over the community as, as ways to, for, for folks to get, come on and off the, the minor streets there. And, and it, it works, works pretty well. It, it also allows some opportunities for some enhanced crossings in some of these locations as well. So I'm going to have to kind of speed through some of this, some of, some of these other ones because in, in sake of time, but what we're talking about by competitive structure, there's, um, there's quite a, quite a bit that's shown here. I think I mentioned before, there's, there's some, just some striping projects, like I believe Striker Road largely gets done with, with striping, big chunks of Gun Club largely get done with striping, and most of these streets actually that allow for on-street parking and can, can be done with striping. I think the thing for you guys to keep in mind here is that, that your current TSP, your current development code, it, it has a threshold in there for when, when we might want to start seeing bike lanes on collector streets. So all these streets that are shown in green currently have on-street parking. And then most cases, people are really relying on that on-street parking. And then the code and, and the TSP, it, it has a threshold of about 2,000 vehicles. And once you pass that 2,000 vehicles, it says that the city will then consider the need for, for, for on-street bike lanes, sort of way of balance the benefits of the on-street parking versus the on-street bike lanes and within the context of the larger system. And I think that's still a good way to approach this, because a lot of, a lot of these streets, some of them are definitely going to reach that 2,000 threshold within the 20-year timeframe. Other ones, not so much, like we don't really see Marygold Picture Williams G Street to some extent, depending on the level of connectivity. We don't really expect to see those reaching that, that, that 2,000 vehicle threshold. But other streets like Striker and Gun Club and Seventh and Fourth, there's a, there's a good chance you'll see, you'll see it on those. Let's see, for, for pedestrian facilities, this is really just filling in gaps in the network. We have actually a pretty consistent and robust pedestrian network. All these little gray dots are the existing crossings, all the gray lines are the existing sidewalks. You may not always have the, may not always have the width that you want or the condition that you want or the ADA facilities that you want. Those things do, those can be established over time. And what we heard from most folks is that just filling in these really critical gaps around the community is, is a higher priority. So that's what we emphasized in, in the plan. We've got a handful of crossings, a handful of new sidewalks. And then the purple lines in there are the, are all the shared paths and trails that are also part of the plan. Quite a bit, quite a bit on transit. This is largely done by, by chariots. And you guys are, I'm sure you're all familiar with their service. There's some, some additional services coming in, some service enhancements. Largely what you see in the TSP though is, is, is our stop enhancements and different ways of addressing bicycle and pedestrian connections to these transit stops and various amenities that are available at the transit stops to make them comfortable for folks that are utilizing transit. Other elements that are in the TSP that are, are pretty important to make, make note of is Other elements that are in the TSP that are are pretty important to make make note of is we have the goals that we, goals and objectives that we use to guide the process. We did include standard cross-sections, something that wasn't in the in the previous TSP, but allows for some flexibility of the implementation of the design standards out there. We have a handful of traffic safety projects and policies. We also, per the Oregon Transportation Planning Rule, we address the air rail, water and pipeline, even though they're not. Well, the water and pipeline are are large parts of the community, air and rail are are both important parts of this community. Managing the transportation system, this is just different ways of making the system more efficient. Also introducing some more technological elements into the plan and then funding. So I'm gonna just two more slides and then I'll I'll pause here is the next thing is the plan amendments. This is Angelo planning. I don't think Matt Hacey's joined us. He was gonna make a last minute appearance here, but I'll just jump into it. So the comprehensive plan, this is what we like to see for comprehensive plans is really just to replace the, currently the comprehensive plan has a list of policies. Those policies will live in the TSP as sort of overarching policies. We could likely still have independent, our individual, our policies in our individual modal sections as well. But the the comprehensive plan would be amended just to refer back to the TSP. And then part of this is also just ensuring existing relevant comp plan policies are addressed in TSP. So we take everything out of that comp plan and make sure it's reflected in the TSP. The development code does have the handful of changes and Fred, I might fumble my way through this. So if you have a better handle on some of these, I'd appreciate it, but the the ones that I think are are probably most important here to to highlight is is the the three, or at least the ones that I I recognize the most, the strengthening pedestrian connectivity standards, these are connections to the adjacent transportation system within within private development projects of a certain size, a certain type, allowing, making sure that those those developments have those connections. Updating references to access management and street design standards, currently they live in in the variety of places, the TSP, the development code and
Public Works Design Standards.
Thank you, Fred. And just making sure that these three documents are all communicating with each other. They're all either saying the same thing or they're all saying their own individual things and there isn't any complex between between those things. A couple of these other ones that may or may not make the make the final cut is frontage fencing, frontage fencing and walls on collectors and arturials. So Fred, Fred has talked to us about some of the some of the newer developments in areas around around the community where where the fencing and sound walls and things are built right up on that, right up to the backside of the sidewalks that make some of these roadways feel really uncomfortable for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so we want to just try to do thing, try to set this up to prevent that kind of stuff from happening in independence. And so establishing some 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 setbacks for fences, height for fences and some fence types and things may actually already be covered pretty well, but just looking at different ways of of addressing that to make sure that again, the collectors and their materials stay comfortable. Targeted off-street parking requirements, I think this is something that was largely the parking code was pretty good. I think they just had a couple of road minor tweaks and there and then find the exemptions for parking the residential conversions again, just just a road minor minor tweak in your parking code. I think that's, that's it. So what what we asked for from the advisory committees was the same from you guys is is one of the things I think it can be easiest for most folks to to take a look at is the the financially constrained project list and just to see, see what's on it, what we're proposing is is real critical over that twenty year timeframe. I'd love to see if there's something there that that doesn't, you know, feel like should be there, something that's not there that you think should be there. Maybe take a look at the modal sections and make sure that there aren't anything else that should be carried forward. Just want to make sure that we have that, that that financially constrained plan dialed in by the time we get to adoption. Next, just general agreement on the projects and the policies listed in the individual chapters. Something that we also asked a lot of folks about is just their vision for for Maine and Monmouth as well as other streets in the community. I think we talked a little bit about how we're re-planning to reconfigure Monmouth Street in particular. West of Ash Creek, east of Ash Creek, there it it's going to look and feel very different as you're traveling down Monmouth Street, but we want to make sure it's it's comfortable for folks and it reflects the vision of the community. And then lastly, just any general questions, comments or concerns, I think. Yeah, that is it. I think what we were asking for, and we could probably be a little more generous with this timeframe, but we're asking for comments by the twenty eighth. In order to get materials out to you guys by, I think we want to get you the revised drafts and Fred correctly, where I'm wrong on some of these states, but if planning commission hearings on the fourteenth, we need to have everything to Fred by the seventh. And so working backwards from that, unless you have significant changes, you can give us stuff right up until about the sixth. So that's it for my presentation.
So am I correct in understanding that we basically have a week to get something to you? Is that correct?
I would say, I was just trying to look at the calendar there.
Ten days.
Yeah, about ten days. Yeah, we could, we we wrote the twenty, I think we asked for the advisory committees by the twenty eighth. I think we can give you guys until about the fourth. Okay, yeah. Yeah. Again, unless there's, unless you have any real bombshells for us, then please, the sooner, sooner, sooner than later would be great.
And Fred, these comments go to you.
Yeah, that's, that would work, that would work great and I can get them forwarded to them.
I can't see everybody. Are there other people with questions or comments at this point? Thank you. Was this presentation helpful? I see lots of shaking of heads. Okay. I don't see anybody waving their hands saying I have, Natasha, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know if if I'm supposed to send in questions, but I I guess I had two things. One is when they mentioned about the, a lot of the roads going by schools, that's something, a concern that I share is taking more traffic by our schools. And then my other question is in regards to the center lanes, particularly the one by Fourth Street on on Fourth and Monmouth. And I have the privilege of living on that corner and my question is in regards to the speed limits because I know that the speed limit there drops pretty drastically, I think down to twenty five or twenty and my, I'm curious how people perceive speed limits when there is a center lane. My gut tells me that center lanes tend to be on faster roads and I worry that folks maybe won't slow down and you're hitting downtown at that point where there are a lot of pedestrians in the school. So I would just be curious to know what the perceptions of a center lane is in regards to speed for drivers.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a great question and a great point. And just, just to touch on that for a moment, I'd, I'd say that the, the way that the roadway is configured right now with the two two side-by-side travel lanes and on-street parking. It, at least my experience has been with, when with with very limited use of that on-street parking, you essentially end up with two twenty-ish foot, more like seventeen, like eighteen to twenty foot travel lanes in in each direction. And I would suspect, and I I can't say this for sure, that that with, again, without anybody parking on street that it could feel like you have this nice big wide traveling to to go in with the, with the center turn lane, with the absence of an on-street bike lane. It's it's a little bit, it's actually kind of a unique configuration because most of the time on highways, we're going to have on-street bike lanes, travel lanes and in some cases, center turn lanes. In this case, we wanted to try to preserve that curb-to-curb width of of Monmouth Street, particularly in this area east of Ash Creek. And so needing to provide the additional capacity out there, needing to provide the opportunity for people to slow down and and be able to make the turns on and off the streets there, instead of turning, felt like the way to go. I I think it will. It'll narrow the the path for the travel lanes. And if you use, do some, maybe some shoulder line striping, some crosswalk striping and other other things out there. The idea of narrowing the the travel lane is is one that has a tendency to to significantly, maybe not significantly, but it does reduce traffic speeds or travel speeds. And I would hope that with that sort of further defining the space, eliminating the on-street parking and replacing with that turn lane would 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 pull that down. That'd be my hope.
Great, thanks.
So just one more thing that I'll add is because I've, I've sort of been hesitant to the whole idea of a center turn a two-way left turn lane on Monmouth Street, a lot of this project. And part of the reason for that is because I do think it, it makes that more of, I mean, it it makes it less of a community street and more of I'm sorry. It makes more of a, I'm sitting next to a dog and the dog just turned off the camera. So so the, the, it makes it more of a community, it makes it more of a through street, less of a community street. And so that's always been sort of my concern with the two-way left turn lane. One thing that I think we do have the possibility of doing if we go to a two-way left turn lane is to really take some of these spots and consider ways of enhancing a crosswalk. So potentially putting an enhanced crosswalk across the street. And one thing that this plan calls for is like a shared more of like a bike boulevard sort of treatment on something like Fifth, which isn't ever going to get a whole lot of traffic. And so if we considered an enhanced crosswalk at something like Fifth, potentially it could really enhance the pedestrian space along, along the roadway and it could help sort of narrow down the road so it doesn't feel as wide as as it is. So that's one thing that sort of, sort of sold me on the idea that a two-way left turn lane could work, especially if we consider some designs to actually ensure that it's maintaining some of the the things that we value.
Counselor Morton.
Thank you. A couple of things I just wanted to make note of. First of all, I firmly believe that that parking study is very important because we have some parking and off-street parking issues on tonight's council agenda and also there is a constant hum downtown of not enough places to park. And that's something that we should not neglect getting done right away. And secondly, I learned Monday morning that the trolley that has been considered locally has been nearly completely funded by some of the money coming through our state representatives and senators and that might, that would contribute materially to the transit system. That's it for now.
Thank you, counselor. Other comments under our questions. Counselor Core.
I just want to highlight Mayor David Klein made a comment in the comment field. He'd like to make a public comment that's appropriate at this time.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm just
Mayor, I think we would, we would wait till
Yeah, that
public comments, which was right around in the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I, I was just pulling up what the, what the chat was. I didn't have chat open. So David, we'll, we're going to let you speak during a public comment time. Other comments under our questions. Okay, we have ten days to get additional comments and thoughts in at related to to this. And then we kind of keep grinding forward. This is one of those things that's going to take a while to do. This is a twenty year plan. So we have to put our vision caps on and then try to look forward and try to plan for the future. Sound okay? Okay, I want to thank the members of the planning commission who have joined us this evening. Thank you very much for being here and appreciate that. We're going to move on to the rest of the agenda. So we're going to go from there. So thank you, planning commission members. And we're going to just keep going. Council members, you have minutes from the April twenty seventh meeting in front of you. Do they meet with your approval? Excuse me, Karen Johnson. Karen, you are waving your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make note that there is a Scrivener's error that has been corrected. The meeting starting time was not six oh three, but six thirty.
Thank you. Counselor Core.
I think there's something missing from the second sentence in the Traffic Safety Commission portion of the council liaison reports. It just seems like an awkward end to the sentence and I don't remember what what the conversation was.
And where was that? I'm sorry.
Second sentence under five dot two dot one, Traffic Safety Commission.
I'm not
Something to do with a bike pedestrian friendly, what? What's missing from that sentence?
Oh, with bike pedestrian friendly by yeah, it needs like bike pedestrian friendly access or streets, whatever, but that's what it was referring to, pedestrian friendly, bike friendly.
Counselor Core, is that the amendment that you'd like to be, make sure that that's in there?
Whatever's missing from that sentence could be added, that would be fine.
Yeah, I think Fred was talking about projects is probably the best.
Okay. All right. With those amendments, does that make it okay for everybody?
Projects is the correct word. Thank you.
Thank you.
After friendly.
Thank you.
I move to approve the minutes as of it.
The motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Morton. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, I hear no, no opposition. Motion carries. We're going to go, I have three people who have public comment and that we're going to go to. And so we're going to start with Mr. Ahmad, Ahmad, he was going to, wants to talk to us this evening. And that Karen, is he coming in or is he on? Okay, so he'll be joining us.
Just a second. Yeah, he's on his way in the room.
Okay. Put my mask on here since I'm inside. Good evening. You're welcome to take off your mask while you're presenting. Good evening. You have no more than five minutes, but welcome to the city council. Oh, she's trying to make sure she's going to turn it on here. There you go. Please step forward. Good evening and welcome.
Remember me?
Yes, I know I do. Yes.
Okay, so I'm here to retalk again about the train noise complaint that was happening last summer. Oh, it's just gotten worse. Back in the day, I don't think this area was your area.
I can't hear him.
Hold on for a second, please. You can maybe step closer here. Say something so we can see if your sound comes through. Okay, we're still adjusting here. You're doing okay. We're just trying to make sure the technology works. Try that, let's see, just say hello or something so I can, is that, can people hear better? You can come up even much closer.
Hello.
Yeah, and you're going to have to use your outside voice. So just
Okay, how about now?
Is that better, counselors? I've seen shaking of heads. It's a little better. So you're going to have to, you're going to have to speak up pretty promptly.
Okay, well, everybody's looking at my beard right now, so I'm going to just put my mask back. All right, so I just take it off. I'm here to talk about, again, about the train noise problem that we spoke about last summer, if everybody remember. Okay, so I don't believe this area right here, but a railroad track was a senior area. Okay, so I don't believe this area right here, but a railroad track was a senior area back in the day. So now it's officially a senior area with a lot of older people with a lot of health problem. And recently, one of my neighbors just passed away. She had major health problems. And a part of a main factor of her not getting any better because of the train noise, she cannot sleep. And she signed a petition with the 26 people that signed, so it just got worse. And the second reason is I heard that now the city got funded. And like, I don't want to say the number, but it's a bunch of money. I'm not sure how much exactly, but it's a lot. I think it's enough to cover, to put eight gates or whatever the gates are missing in the H railroad crossings. Last time I've heard from Mr. Pesimire, he told me it's $1 million project to put all the gates and electricity and construction. And the city has no funds for that or not willing to pay that much for that. I don't think there was no funds for that at the time. Now the things have changed now and the city got funded by the stimulus package or whatever the money come from. So I think that's a priority problem that should be taken in consideration. You know, for everybody's sake, there's hundreds of people that have been hurt all the way nearby the railroad crossings because of the train noise. So things have changed. Got worse in and there's money. So I think solutions is put gates if possible. I mean, if possible, if not, I mean, I don't know what else we can do, if not, if not. That's briefly because you said you all like have five minutes, so I just took off a lot of details I wanted to say. And I'll prefer, sir, that you handle the that issue personally because other people take a long time and I'm being very honest until they get back to me. And I don't think nobody cares. As long as the person is not living near the railroad track and not impacted by the noise, they don't care much. I mean, you've got to feel it to to know how bad it is. I mean, some people got used to the noise. But a lot of people don't. Either like spend a million dollar in gates or go to visor having like make a vaccination against against the train noise, like have like antibodies against the train noise or something. You know, it's going to cost billions of dollars. I think $1 million against versus billions of dollars, nothing. I don't know. I'm just trying one more time. It might work, might not. I'm just, you know, that's what I can do.
So thank you for coming and putting this in front of us again. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. But what's going to happen though?
I don't know. I I don't know what what may or may not happen. I don't have answers just sitting here, so I don't have answers. Dealing with trains is a very complicated thing and it, there's federal rules, there's all sorts of stuff.
Well, I already, once I connected everybody and reached everybody, I can reach the bottom line. There's no solution but putting gates. And with the gates, it's going to be signs says no train horn look. And there's several of them in Salem and 12th Street. If you're going all the way down to downtown, there's four, right, but you know, after each other. So that's the only solution, I guess. So I guess it's just my opinion, which I don't know if right or wrong, it's just money problem. Because if there is money, we can just start a process. More money, there is nothing you can do. I mean, it is pretty simple.
Okay. I appreciate you taking the time to come and share with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So Mayor, just to clarify the record, I believe I said that the cost, the cost of that project would be at least a million. It's actually probably in the multiple millions of dollars. We just haven't scoped that, but it's a, it's a very, very extensive project to to try to do something like that.
Thank you. I I didn't know the the dollars and cents. Okay, I think we have on, we're providing the opportunity for some people to comment. Mr. Klein, I think you had a a comment about parking. And I think you were online, so Mr. Klein.
I, now you can hear me.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't know whether this is a time to speak to the to the parking item on your agenda, whether you take public comment now or later on that one, so.
Now would be just as good as anything else.
Okay, and then the other piece is, do you take comments on the TSP at this point as well? I see a note from Tom. Okay.
You have five minutes.
Okay, I'll do my best. So first off, thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's been a while since I've had a chance to speak to you and first time as a citizen of your community. Quickly on the TSP, great piece of work. Thank you very much for undertaking that in a timely way and a comprehensive way and a nice engagement process. I do want to just speak out to one element of it and I, which I view as somewhat of a missed opportunity and perhaps in 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 favor of cost constraint. And that's the river, the River Road Main Street intersection. It's one of your worst performing intersections in the community and the solution is going to probably net you at best a level of service C. I think per Matt's comments, it's not going to be as, not really going to be a comprehensive solution. And beyond that, the TV can get a better solution there. You're going to wait on the county to replace a bridge that doesn't need replacing. So it it doesn't seem to be your best opportunity. On the flip side, this is an location where you can make a a statement for the community. It is really truly one of your, one of the several gateways into the community of independence where you have an opportunity to to bring together a multimodal school opportunity with the new trail that you've just been, received a grant award on. Congratulations for the extension of the Southern Trail. It's an opportunity to bring together your bicycle, bicycle location, bike ped solution as well as a a permanent solution, not one that will fail at the end of the 20-year period by putting in the roundabout that was initially suggested and I believe is feasible at that location. I understand that it doesn't hit the cost constrained version, but nonetheless, it's an elegant solution. It's a great statement for the city of Independence, which deserves great statements at its entries. And so just a, just a quick thought on that one. The, your parking ordinance, I get that you need to further regulate the the larger vehicles in the city. I would ask that you take a look at that through a lens of equity. I think those that can best afford to take their trailers, their work equipment off the streets are those that have, that have more property, more, more locations. The vast majority of properties in this city don't have locations to put trailers or to put their service vehicles. And if you do a survey of your storage units in this area, which we do because we're, we have a trailer or we will shortly, you will find that they're full and have been full in the years and it's years-long, years-long wait to get into any location in Monmouth, Monmouth Independence location. So what you're going to do is if, you know, in essence, those that have the large properties, perhaps have hangers, will be able to solve that problem for themselves rather easily. Those that are a little less fiscally able, a little less, more at risk. I I do want to tell one little story because I know that at least one of the concerns are being risen, are being raised in my neighborhood with one of the the landscape folks that are over here. At least the one across the street from me, Meza Landscaping, does a great job of consolidating his equipment and beyond that, does a great job when nobody knows of going and helping all his neighbors. He stops in on some of the people over in this neighborhood that have, you know, zero ability to take care of their properties and he just goes over there and voluntarily does that. So they give quite a bit back in this neighborhood. And by and large, I think there, you know, the, I think most people would find that our community is, you know, our neighborhood is pretty supporting of the folks that are in our community. You'll find maybe there'd be a few that complain, but those are my comments. Thank you very much. And also I'm, I will be available during your appointment of the Parks and Rec Committee if you have any questions on me during that time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Appreciate it. Glad to have you with us today. Okay. Let's, our next public comment, Natasha Adams.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I get to wear multiple hats today, so thanks for bearing with me. And I am here specifically today to talk about some safety issues down on Fourth Street and Monmouth and more specifically, not just that intersection, but also just the road in front of IES. I really want to commend Chief Mason along with many of you. I wrote a letter on May 7 and not only received written responses but have had the privilege of spending time on the phone with Chief Mason. And I think a lot of times we talk about, you know, one voice can make a difference and and that becomes a little fuzzy sometimes and we don't always believe that. But I really feel heard and I really appreciate that. Not only was I able to speak, but I was asked for suggestions and I have seen some of those suggestions implemented. So I really want to commend you as a group for for making something like that possible. I think a lot of the problems now that we have are sort of inherent to the area. Fourth and Monmouth, we all know, and after seeing the transportation plan is a very busy intersection. Because I live on Fourth and Monmouth and I walk my child to school, I I cross that street at least four times a day and have seen the crossing guard almost get hit by a car multiple times. And she so sheepishly walks into that crosswalk now that I really feel for her. And at this point, I think in a realistic manner, solutions cost money, right? It's it's unrealistic to think that a police officer can be there every day. And and so I think there are some solutions, obviously, that are lower cost versus higher cost, whether it's putting in some lights, adding another crossing guard. A lot of times what's happening with the traffic is folks are waiting for a break in traffic. So they're looking in one direction, the crossing guard's on the other crosswalk. She stops traffic and the car doesn't look, you know, in that direction, sees a break in traffic, comes peels out and then almost hits the crossing guard. So if there's a way to make both of those crosswalks part of the peripheral vision when you're turning, I I think that's important. But again, I I really appreciate not only having the opportunity to speak today, but truly feeling heard. And I have told Chief Mason and many of you that if there is a way I can help with this process, I I would like to be able to do that. I think the school district has been really receptive as well because ultimately we want our kids and pedestrians to be safe. So I will continue to help as I can and I really appreciate seeing some of the changes that have taken place.
Thank you, Natasha. Appreciate that. Are there other public comment in the waiting area, Karen? No, okay. If counsel will indulge me, I thought that Mr. Pesimire and I spoke about this in advance. I know that the parking discussion was going to be part of his city manager report. So unless anybody objects, I'd just like to let him jump into his city manager report out of order and then we'll continue on with that because I I'm trying to put the similar pieces together because it makes things not so choppy. Does that sound okay? Thank you. Mr. Pesimire, to you, please.
Yes, so actually I have, Chief Mason is, can join us as well because we definitely wanted to talk about some of the things that Natasha was talking about specifically with the schools and IES and conflicts. And so we spent, you know, a fair amount of time working with the school district and others to try to make things better for the short term. But we also are taking a look at longer-term items as well. So I think I'll actually let the chief kind of lead out here if he's available and then I'll kind of just talk a little bit more about maybe Fourth and Monmouth Street and some thoughts there, so.
Great. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just a quick rundown on the actions the city took after we received Natasha's complaint, I think. I actually couldn't hear you, Mr. Pesimire. I'm sorry. When I was coming in, I couldn't hear what you were saying, but that's where we are. Is that all right?
Correct.
Okay, great. Yeah, so when we received that letter, first thing I did was to ask School Resource Officer Barlow and Officer Inman, who is our motorcycle officer, to go down and do some enforcement or at least assess whether or not enforcement could be done to assist in the, in trying to change some behaviors down there. And quickly I heard that the traffic backup was a real mess that we really needed to look at improving. So I got ahold of the school district and they sent Jason, or I'm sorry, Mr. Clark down with Mr. Pesimire and Fred Evander. And we all went down during an actual pickup time and observed what what really was a mess. It was the traffic queuing, waiting for their turn to get into the pickup area was backing up and blocking all of the southbound lane of Fourth Street. So they were literally at a stop for, well, we saw, we were there probably a half an hour before pickup and there were already cars waiting. They get there early and that's the protocols the school's using for COVID that they bring one child out at a time using a radio. That child comes out, gets in the car and then that car goes away and the line moves forward one slot. And so if you can imagine, all of the cars that are coming to get their kids are backed up in the lane of travel. People that unfortunately end up in that area and have nothing to do with school pickup, don't really know what's going on. And we saw people driving in the northbound lanes around the stopped cars in the southbound lanes and speed did not appear to be an issue for the time we were there, nor did the officers find any, you know, real speeding violations. It was just the congestion and that really caused a lot of problems. So the immediate solution there that we implemented was to close off the parking all the way along that side of Fourth Street, all the way down to A Street, giving vehicles a lot more area to queue and wait for their turn to go into the pickup zone. And that way it was freeing up the lanes of travel. I have gotten one complaint already about a person that needs their parking in front of their house because they they have some physical limitations and it's hard for them to to get into their home. And we've made it difficult for them by taking their parking away. But they did agree after a conversation today that they could make it through the end of this school year, fine. So if we can hopefully find some better solutions before next school year starts, that will, that will be helpful and everyone will be in agreement that we're fine the way it is for the rest of this year. When I did talk to Natasha on the phone, I I learned that one of her concerns that I wasn't clear on in her letter was the crosswalk at B Street that crosses Fourth. That's the one she's referring to that she called the back. I think she called the back or crosswalk or back crossing. I wasn't sure what that meant, but I can understand why that's a problem. So the cars, even the way we have it now, when they're at a stop, are going to block the view of kids trying to leave the school property to go across Fourth Street and the view of vehicles driving on Fourth Street that can't see the kids because of the stopped cars. So we are going to reach out to the school and see if there's a way that they can enhance some of their parental or adult, I guess, better word, adult supervision of the kids crossing there as a short-term fix. Again, we're just trying to get at this point to the end of the school year safely. And then we're hopeful that some other solutions can be looked at for next school year.
Mr. Pesimire, then, or did you want to go and then?
Yeah, I'll just comment a little bit. So I think, you know, like as Chief said, we've kind of come up with some solutions here for this year. We're going to work with the school district on some longer-term solutions and looking forward to doing that and and glad they're they're willing to partner with us on that. I did want to talk a little bit about Fourth and Monmouth as well. I had a chance to talk to Valerie, the crossing guard there for quite a while the other day. And, you know, certainly heard her concerns and and kind of looked at the situation. I think that's probably one where, you know, we're fortunate, coming off the TSP, we have some professional consultants where we could do something really quick. We also have the PSU students who are coming in. But I think that's going to be a project, at least from my perspective, that's going to need some attention and some better signage and maybe some enhanced crossing devices there. We're going to have to work with ODOT because that is a state highway. And so, but, you know, ODOT cares about kids too. So I think over the summer, we're going to definitely try to take a look at some, some thoughts and ideas of how to make that more visible to not only people coming down Monmouth Street, but hopefully people who are also making the turn that Natasha mentioned because that definitely is is an issue as people are are looking for oncoming traffic and trying to make a gap and may not have just, you know, checked back in the other direction. So. So, uh, I think there's definitely more that we can do there, and I think there's definitely more we should do there. So that's something that we'll be working on here, uh, over the summer months as well.
Counselor Corey, we had a question.
Yeah, um, I used to live on Fourth and A, so I know that area very, very well. And at, uh, 2:45 in the afternoon, you cannot move down that street. And that was pre, that was pre-COVID. And I know, Chief, I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but part of the problem there is everybody drives an SUV and elementary school kids are short. That's something we're never gonna be able to fix. What used to bother me a lot was, um, the folks coming to pick up kids would park in driveways, they parked in yellow striped areas, they double parked. I mean, there are all kinds of issues in that area and it's a very small, you know, very tight area too. So it's difficult to maneuver around there. I used to have to go down Ash to get out of there because I couldn't go down Fourth Street. So, um, but the, the biggest issue for me was elementary school kids are short. You can't see them over a car. And I don't know how to solve that problem, but it is, it's horribly dangerous. We really gotta be suffering.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm sure, Mr. Pesamere, you guys are gonna be, uh, keeping us updated on this as this moves forward in the, uh, the coming months because I liked what, uh, Chief was saying that, uh, getting through the next, what, 10 days or so, two weeks of, uh, school and then, uh, longer-term solutions. I think I could, just cut you off, Mr. Pesamere.
Yeah, no, I was just, like, commenting to Counselor Corey's comment. And, you know, one of the things that we, we really want to take a look at is to maybe relocate where that pickup area happens. If we can make it happen on B Street, um, uh, west of Fourth with a turnaround, um, so the vehicles can go down and, and turn around to pick up. But the more we can do to re- relieve conflict, conflicts on Fourth Street, the better that will be for everyone. So, uh, you know, I don't know if that's a solution or not. That's why we want a professional to come out and take a look at it. But I, I, I think, you know, it's good that we identified this now because you're right. Um, just, uh, COVID going away is not gonna solve the problem. Um, it's gonna, it's gonna take some, some more, uh, thinking. So if it's okay with Mayor, I'll just go ahead and continue on with my, uh, rest of my city manager report.
I'm gonna, Counselor Roden, were you trying to get in here?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that, uh, I appreciate everybody's effort on this. And Tom Pesamere, if there's, I would like to be involved in this in any way that, uh, I, capacity I can to make this a safer area for everybody involved too.
Great, Counselor.
Yeah, and, uh, fortunately our, uh, counselor is on the Traffic Safety Commission and a lot of this stuff will actually end up there from our side as well. So, um, you'll get to hear, you'll get to hear about it there.
Great.
Uh, so just some, uh, news on the museum, um, construction's on schedule, going well. Uh, really excited to see that come together. Again, they usually have the doors open every day, so if you want to stop by and, and take a look and get a feel for the space, uh, please do. Um, the inspection period for the sale of the existing museum is finished. So really the only thing left is to do the closing documents. Um, and that's, uh, not gonna happen until August, uh, when we're actually, uh, ready to move out. Uh, or actually, we've actually moved out. So, um, excited that both those projects are coming together and that, uh, it's all moving forward. Uh, we did receive a $12,000 check, um, for the museum construction for the, from the Heritage Museum Society. Um, they pledged another $8,000 for, uh, the, the construction of the museum. So that's $20,000 that they've, uh, pledged to put in. Um, I know they probably plan on doing some more stuff down the road. Obviously COVID really, uh, impacted their plans to do any, uh, fundraising, uh, for the project. But, uh, that, uh, those monies are, are genuinely appreciated and, um, will be, uh, put to good use. Uh, and then finally, um, some sad news. Uh, I have to announce that our museum manager, um, has, uh, taken another job and will be leaving in early June. So obviously we're in a transition time right now with everything going on. Um, really the next big task that we have is the actual physical move from moving from the old museum to the new museum. So I've asked our library manager, uh, Patrick Bodily to kind of take over that, uh, move so that, uh, our remaining, uh, halftime staff person there can focus on more of the, uh, the programming and, and the other things that we need to do. Obviously we're gonna have to backfill in that and that position. And so we'll be trying to figure out and working on staffing, um, and operation plans for the museum moving forward. So, uh, I, I don't anticipate there'll be a, a large delay in, in getting the museum open, but we definitely want to make sure that when it does open, that it, uh, is fulfilling its, uh, its mission. So, um, we will continue to follow that. But I, I just wanted to let everyone know, um, that that, uh, that position is, is, uh, is now open. Uh, we, as Counselor Morton mentioned, um, the trolley project is, uh, received additional funding. Uh, if you remember right, the City of Independence, uh, received, uh, $400,000 for studying the trolley project. Uh, really this, this project is a collaborative project with, uh, Monmouth and Independence. So while we were, we got the money, really it was, it was both cities' money to, um, to use and, and to, uh, but we were the, the fiscal agent for that. Um, but, uh, the recent announcements that you probably saw on the paper, uh, say that there's gonna be an additional $3 million, uh, coming for that project and equipment and, uh, probably to get operations started. So that actually, according to the, uh, the first study that we did, um, will be probably sufficient monies to really get that, uh, project off to a great start. So, uh, we're excited. Uh, that mo- that money is actually gonna be, go to Monmouth to be the fiscal agent for that. Um, so, uh, that, uh, that will be, again, for the benefit of both cities. Uh, but somebody actually has to kind of take the lead on that. So, uh, that is, um, uh, gonna be moving forward. So, uh, exciting news, uh, that will definitely help with transit and, um, and we're excited to figure out where to go next. We still have quite a bit of that original money for the study to figure out an operations plan. Um, so that's probably the next step that we will be doing is we'll be, uh, kind of managing to figure out how this can operate in the long term. It's great to have capital money to get it started. We also need to make sure that it has a plan to be able to fund itself in the long term. So. Uh, let's see here. The library, uh, was accepted into the Libros for Oregon program. So, um, next year, uh, for children's, young adults and adults, uh, Spanish, uh, language material will be purchased, uh, for the city, not by the city, we're not sending anybody. Uh, but, uh, to, in December's, uh, Guadalajara, uh, book fair. It's a big book fair in Mexico where, um, the, the best, uh, books for, uh, the Latinx and Latinx and the Spanish-speaking community, uh, can get, uh, materials from. So, um, the $2,000 is the maximum amount that you can commit to that. And obviously we're gonna commit that amount, um, from next year's budget. So, uh, looking forward to enhance those collections. That's a small step, but, uh, an important one as we continue to move that, uh, program forward and make sure that we have, uh, material for, for all of our residents. And then, um, finally, uh, just wanted to let you know about some historic preservation grants that are coming up. Um, the city, uh, got $12,000 in grants, uh, um, for, for certified local governments. Um, so eligible projects will include historic windows, repair, restoration, restoration of porches, historic building details and structural or foundation repairs. So, uh, not a great amount of money, but it is, um, good. It's a matching program. So, uh, for every grant, a dollar spent, there has to be a dollar spent, uh, by the, uh, person. There are a number of, um, program requirements, including, uh, being a contributing building to the Independence National Historic District, um, and a number of other items. But, uh, probably the best way, if, if you're interested in that, if you have a historic, uh, building and you want to take a look at, um, getting a matching grant program, uh, would be just to call Fred Evander, um, our city planner. He's, uh, has all the details. Um, he has a, is it, he has it up on the website too with, uh, the application and things, so he can point you in the right direction. But definitely wanted to let people know about that. So that was actually all that I had, Mayor.
Great. Are there questions for the city manager at this point? Okay, I don't see anybody flagging.
Yes, please, sorry.
Go ahead, Marilyn.
Didn't get unmuted quickly enough. Um, is there a particular reason why our museum director is leaving beyond more money somewhere else?
Uh, she, she took another job, um, you know, and I really, you know, don't want to get into details, but certainly, uh, she, she needed a job, uh, that she said where she could work remotely. And with all the interaction that's gonna be required of this job in the community, um, that was something that she was, just wasn't ready.
Okay, I was just concerned because if there's something we could or should be doing differently in her opinion, those would be valuable things to know.
Yes, and, uh, Amanda, uh, as usual, has an exit interview scheduled with her, um, next week. Or actually, maybe that, uh, later this week. So, um, we'll definitely ask that question, but, uh, I, I think it was for personal reasons most of the time.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Yes, Counselor Joe.
Uh, Mr. Pesamere, this question was about the trolley. And I was, I was wondering, cause I had read previously months ago about the trolley. Um, so for $3 million, is that, is that gonna be a, a railed trolley? Or, okay, so just like a bus-like trolley? Okay.
That's currently the vision is to have, um, uh, I don't know if you've seen them, like on the coast, they have the trolley-looking buses that, um, and, uh, I think the goal is to maybe to hopefully get a, uh, electric, uh, uh, vehicle, so battery-operated, not, uh, overhead rails. Um, but yes, it, it definitely will be, uh, a conventional type of, uh, a bus-type vehicles. It may be supported with, by some other type vehicles as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I'm gonna keep us moving. Uh, going back to the regu- to the, where we were under Mayor, uh, just calling to your attention, uh, that I did declare Historic Preservation Month here in Independence. Uh, moving forward, you have a, uh, application to fill a position on the Parks Board for Mr. Klein. And, uh, the application and, uh, memo is there. This is an action item. If someone would make a motion, that'd be helpful.
I'm going to, I'm going to appoint, uh, David Klein to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Position four. I have a motion second by Martin Willis. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed. Thank you very much.
Hi.
It was that, was that a yes or a no, Counselor Roden? I'm sorry, I didn't, uh...
That was a no.
Okay, all right. So recorded. Uh, moving forward, um, under my report, uh, I just want to keep you informed that, uh, had a chance to meet with, uh, Stacy from Senator Merkley's office, showing her some of the projects that we have going on. Had a chance to meet last week with the executive director, Eric Anderson of, uh, SEDCor. Um, as you, many of you know, I'm on the, uh, Board of Directors of Mid-Wyman Valley Council of Governments. And, uh, I'm on that legislative task force and we're, we're working on, uh, setting up, uh, some legislative issues, conversations for the 43 governments that are cities, counties, special districts and some school districts in Pope, Marion and Yamhill County that'll take place between, uh, July and December so that we can help, uh, legislators and their staff understand the issues facing local governments. There's a lot of new legislators. Uh, also I had the pleasure of being, uh, recently being one of the presenters at the Lake of Oregon Cities and the Oregon Mayor's Association Symposium, Symposium on, uh, Emergency, uh, Preparation. One of the things that, uh, came out from the Director of Oregon Emergency Management is with, uh, uh, the wildfires, with the ice storms and things like that, they have changed their recommendations to people, uh, used to be have three days of, uh, uh, resources at your home to take care of yourself and your family. They have now upped that to two weeks, to two weeks. And so, uh, encourage, uh, now you know what, uh, Father's Day gifts, Christmas gifts, all, you know, you can make a gift of emergency, uh, prepared packet and have it ready to go. Moving forward, let's, uh, hear on some council liaison reports. Uh, Counselor Takeus, would you like to start with the MyNet report, please?
Uh, yes, I think, so the first thing, um, at our last board meeting, we got the news. I, I think probably everybody's heard this already, but, uh, General Manager, uh, Don Patton will be retiring by the end of the year. Uh, so the board will be looking for replacement. Uh, I've got some ideas, but we haven't started that process yet. The, the other thing is we, MyNet has, Budget Committee has just passed the budget. Uh, I think still needs to be finalized by the actual board, uh, which we'll probably do at our next meeting, next month. Um, and I've been told that, uh, MyNet has just cut a check for the full debt service payment for, uh, the upcoming debt payment. So that's good news.
Great. Thanks, uh, Cal. Counselor Takeus. Uh, Counselor Joe for Parks and Recreation, please.
Um, there's nothing new. We did not have a meeting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the, the brevity of the report. Counselor Martin Willis for Planning Commission, please.
Okay, so, um, they've actually been, uh, reasonably busy the last few months. So, uh, they're looking at reviewing, um, some areas in town that may not be, uh, zoned entirely properly. So we may see some changes coming there. Um, also some possible, uh, revisions to quads and quints. We don't have, uh, an actual definition, uh, to determine exactly what those terms mean within our... Fred is, um, is gonna bring some additional information back at future meeting. And, uh, they approved with conditions, 27 conditions, I might add, uh, a subdivision at 5995 13th Street, uh, that in, in, down the road, uh, would accommodate 45 homes. Uh, tons of discussion, uh, that's why the number of conditions regarding, uh, wetlands, trails and park space within that development. And that is the Planning Commission in a nutshell. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask a favor of you. Um, and that is simply that, um, could we maybe read the Historic Preservation Proclamation, please? Karen did a really nice job with that, so.
Okay, hold on. Let me pull it up here. Hold on, I'm getting there.
While, while she's looking at that, uh, is there a, uh, one of those, uh, limits on the new subdivision that you're talking about? Does there a lot size, uh, suggestion on that?
Kathy, you're, you're muted.
Yeah, I mean, did you hear my question?
Wrong way. Yes, I did.
Okay.
They're, they're not that far in the process. This was just simply, uh, an initial approval. So we don't have project-type design, planning, all that comes down there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counselor Roden, please mute your phone. The ballgame is overpowering us. Uh, whereas National Historic Preservation Month was established in 1973 by the National Trust for Historic Preservation in order to promote historic preservation and community pride in local heritage sites. And whereas the historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas the City of Independence has a 39-block National Register District that was established March of 1989 with a listing of 159 contributing instructors. And whereas the city's many historic buildings helped illuminate our city's past and brighten its future. And whereas it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping preserve the city's architectural heritage. Now therefore I, John McCardle, Mayor of the City of Independence, do hereby proclaim, made 2021 as National Historic Preservation Month and call upon the residents of Independence to recognize this special observance the 25th May, 2021. I got to read something, Karen. That was fun. Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, were you going further? I would like to make note that Counselor Morton sent me a message that she did refrain from voting on the Parks and Rec Board appointment. So I would like to just make note for the record that the vote for, uh, that would be then for one and one.
Yes, thank you.
I did not vote as well.
Oh, okay. So that would make it three, one and two, which?
Uh, I vote aye.
Okay.
Okay.
So you are decl- declaring the...
Yes.
Okay, abstentions is negative and voting aye to for the, thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's go on to, uh, Ms. Butch for a finance, for, Mr. Pesamere, is she actually giving an oral report? Or is it just, uh, we have a written report in the packet?
Uh, you have a written report in the packet. She's certainly here to answer any questions, but she wasn't planning on giving, uh, a significant, uh, oral report unless you, uh, you had any questions.
Do, good evening, Ms. Butch. I, I just know that you've had to, you've had to do a lot of talking with Budget Committee. Does anybody have, uh, uh, questions, uh, from the, uh, in the finance report? There is an extensive report in the packet. Is everybody okay?
I would like to share something, though, real quick. We had a meeting with underwriters last week and regarding opportunity to do another refunding on a portion of our 2013 G O bonds. And we decided to hold off on that because currently there is in the legislature, the House and Senate, a, a bill to reinstate advanced refundings for local municipalities and other governments. And I would like to encourage the council, if you've got legislatures that you're in contact with, to encourage them to support the passing of those bills. It would be for us, for the City of Independence, it's, it could provide a savings in the life of the general obligation bonds of upwards of a couple hundred thousand dollars for the life of those bonds, the remaining life. So advanced refunding is a real wonderful tool for saving money in our debt. So I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, just a quick comment. That's the federal House and Senate. So this is a nationwide effort and we'll, it's very technical. So we'll definitely put together something that can be shared with them.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, without objection, we're going to keep moving forward. We have the Parking Code Amendment. As you recall, last time, we we've moved it on through first reading with the, and I was one of the people who broke that tie just so that we had a document in, in front of us to discuss it the next time and reserving the right to, it was a procedural vote on my part as opposed to anything else. Mr. Pessimer, do we have any additional information? I think Ms., I think Ms. Johnson has some public comment that was both in the packet. And I think there was one late, one that came late. Is that correct?
There's two, yeah, it looks like two that came late, so.
Too late.
But she's, she's shared those. I guess the only other comments I would make is council did ask us to put this in the utility bill. We did that. We also put it out through social media as well, just to try to make sure that the information got out. And obviously, we got some, some responses. So, you know, I don't really think staff has anything to add, you know, from, from as far as code changes that we would propose or anything. Certainly, hearing from the residents is, is always a good thing. And I think, you know, this is really for your consideration and, and information to you give to staff if you have additional direction to us.
Okay, so here's what we can do. We can what I'd like to suggest is that what we do is go to second reading, just approve reading the ordinance. That's it. It's just, that's a technical and then we'll go to third reading. And then we will have full debate and an up or down vote. Does that sound okay to everybody? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're going to do is if somebody would just, and this is a procedural thing to making through. We're going through the right hoops here. And this is not, all this is, is getting it into the right place to have the appropriate discussion. And because we're going to have a third and final, a third, a follow-up vote on up or down. And we'll have the full discussion that goes with that. Is that okay? Okay, so if someone would give me a motion to do the second reading, and I have to get my piece of paper out here, just hold on for a second.
I'm, I'm going to see if I can do this by memory. I move to read Council Bill Number 2021-01 for the second time by title only.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And I need a second. Okay. And to, this is just to move to the third and final discussion. This is not locking you into anything. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 And is, and is there any opposed? Okay, so we're now, so Karen's going to now do the second reading, the official second reading. Go ahead.
Were there any abstentions? Or was that passed? Okay.
Stained.
Okay, so, so five a's.
Fine.
Zero nays, one abstention.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
And an ordinance amending identified sections of Independence Municipal Code, Chapter 32, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 6, Stopping, Standing and Parking, and Declaring an Effective Date.
Okay, so what would we do now is that someone's going to move the proposed ordinance. And there's going to be a second. Then we're going to have the full discussion and any information. And then we'll have a vote, an up or down vote. Okay, so making the motion does not, is, it's just a procedural thing. I'm, I just want to assure everybody, this is, I'm telling everybody in advance how this is working. And then we have an up or down vote at the end, but I have to have something in front of us to vote up or down. So if I can have a motion for, for the third, the move to adopt the proposed ordinance, and we'll get a second, and then we're going to go to full discussion. And then we'll have an up or down vote at the end of that discussion. Okay? That make sense to everybody? All right, if someone would make a motion.
Move to Council Bill 2021-01.
Okay, I have, have a motion and a second. Now we have discussion. What people have opinions, thoughts on this, this is the time. What, we are now in discussion of the motion.
I'd like to start, if, if I may, by saying that I read through the that we received this evening with comments from people. And I am struck by the one that talks about enforcement based on status. And that was also mentioned in another discussion we had tonight. I'd just like to make sure that there are provisions for equitable enforcement and how to deal with situations where there simply is no storage available. What options do people that have otherwise parked on the street, what options do they have for mitigation?
Okay. I, I'd like to provide some information if that's okay. Thank you. I've been taking a look at this ordinance and weighing it for a while. And so yesterday evening, after, well, people are basically, while the Blazer game was on. So I didn't watch that. I did, I drove, I think it was 17, maybe 18 miles along the streets of Independence. And I was keeping track of trailers and things like that. And here is what I found. Now, I don't claim to have been down every street, but having walked many of these streets during election season, I know, I know all of them. Here's what I found, that there were 15 trailers that were not connected to a vehicle. But of, of 11 of those were travel trailers. There were 19 truck, trucks and utility trailers connected yet there. So the utility trailer was connected to the truck and there were 19 of those. There was one big trailer. There was one semi-truck cab. There were two large cargo, more than 30-foot-long trucks. There were no semi-trailers anywhere in town that I could find. And so while that may not be everything in town, that was what I saw. A lot of the trailers that I saw, the utility trailers tied in with trucks. There were landscape businesses. There was small businesses that that were keeping all their, you know, their daily type of equipment. It was pretty obviously small business folks and they were parking on the street. I also took a look at, as I, as I went around, I looked at the configurations. And for the most part, not, you know, people like to be able to have parking in different places, but I didn't see huge safety issues that that were, that would demand that we do something that's going to go throughout the whole community. So I think an earlier comment was made about equity. And a lot, I know that a lot of the landscaping and some of the smaller businesses are fo- folks that sometimes are getting started in business, sometimes came from other places, different backgrounds. And so I was really struck by some of that. So that's what I saw was I drove around yesterday evening for several hours. So I don't know if that helps, but I'm inclined to not limit parking at this point. So that's, that's what I'm leaning towards at this point. So that's, that's my opinion at this point. Other people.
May I ask a question? There. So did you, as you were driving around, did you also notice parking spaces in those residential areas? Did you, did it feel like there was just no parking anywhere or, or was it, you know, there was, there are slots here and there?
It's really irregular. In some places, there's, there's vast amounts of parking. But other places, it is, it is squishier, you know, over on the area around Marygold. You know, it's, it's squishier. And so it, it's it's a mixed bag in, in different places. And when houses are closer together and there, there is less parking. So I wonder about issues all over, you know, trying to pass something all over. I didn't mean to go on. Excuse me, Counsel Martin Willis.
Okay, so I, I too share the, the equity concern around the parking. I certainly don't want to put any of our small businesses out of business because as we've been made aware, trying to find storage for those trailers is impossible pretty much within the boundaries of my independence. I would, however, like to see continued enforcement for, for safety reasons when those things are parked very close to corners where stop signs are, are getting blocked. I think then it does, it becomes, because we are being an equity issue, then it's just a flat-out safety issue. And so I would want to see continued enforcement in those arenas. But other than that, like you, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, driven extensively, you know, through our town. And we have several tradespeople there on 7th. And I think to the point that Counselor Morton addressed that oftentimes those violations are enforced or noted based on status. I know along my area, often complaints come from sort of further up the road in some newer homes regarding the, the more north end of 7th Street. So those are my thoughts. I would be happy to, I think, pass the remainder of the changes so long as we leave trailers that are safely parked alone.
Other comments?
So. I, I have, I did go and knock on some doors and just talk to people to see what their situation was, why their trailer was out there. And some of them were just getting ready for, you know, a trip. Some would come back. Some just didn't have the parking available. I will tell you that it was, it was kind of sad. A lot of people are scared to come and talk to us. Because I did ask for public comment if anybody wanted to share with us. And I got a lot of, I don't want to do that. So I'm excited that people are, are looking at all of the aspects of what this would do to people in our community. So I, I am voting no on it.
Counsel Takeus, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I did have a comment. One of the complaints we've got, and I don't think it happens as often, but complaints about tractor trailers that occasionally get parked on streets. I know Ash Street, for a while, there was a frequent problem there. And, and maybe it just means we need to go back and look at this parking code and, and make some changes. But we might want to think about adding something about tractor trailers. Or, or, you know, the trailers for tractor trailers, those large, large trailers.
Yeah. I have a technical question for staff here, please. I've read too many things and so you're going to have to help me out here. So we're, we're talking about the trailer parking issue. And in the document, I don't recall which was, were there other items that we needed to, to deal with in the ordinance? Or, or this was basically just the parking and trailers and the things we're discussing. Is that correct, Fred, Tom?
Mayor, that's essentially correct. I mean, there were things that we were talking, we were defining RVs and other things. But, you know, they all kind of go hand in hand. Chief Mason could probably comment more on that. But, you know, I, I don't think that, you know, if, if there was something important, we couldn't go back and, and read that particular item.
Thank you. That's, that, that's what I was wanting to get confirmation. Are there other comments or thoughts that need to be shared? I don't, please go Counsel Roden.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
For making the rounds and, and giving us your input on Saw around town. That's very helpful. I live close to the intersection of Covey Run and Marygold.
Right.
Often there is a Walmart tractor trailer parked perpendicular to Covey Run. I've had at least personally, on my own, had three safety incidents with, with either trailers pulled too close to a stop sign so you can't see around them or a truck like the, like the Walmart tractor trailer that is so far into the middle of the road that you have to pull out in order to be able to see traffic coming from both directions. I know the tractor trailer too that, that Counsel Takeus refers to, because I used to drive around that corner a lot too. I know when I first moved to Independence, moved here in an RV and my RV was on the street for three days. I didn't realize there was an issue with that. And until the code enforcement person told me about it, I had no idea. I was blocking visibility coming from Ash on the 4th. So I think we have to take responsibility for the fact that it's not just that you might or might not see a pedestrian, you might pull your car too far into an intersection in order to see around it. So for me, this is, this is wholly a safety issue. I totally get the business owner's perspective of this. But I, I put life and safety above everything. So I will, I will be supporting those ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Roden, I think you were, wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear, I, I appreciate everybody's opinion on this so far. But I think it's also important, what Counselor Martin Willis was talking about. It's just proper enforcement of existing codes. I believe that's what she was talking about. And we need to make sure that if there is a safety issue, that we use our code enforcement and the existing laws we have to make sure that our city is safe. Because the changing of the ordinance now, if we don't follow through with those and don't enforce the codes we already have in written, then there won't be any safety improvements. So I, I think there's current rules now that just are being overlooked. And I hope they're not being overlooked to push this item forward. I think that we're looking at what's best for our citizens as a whole, and I appreciate that. And I just don't think this is necessary at this time.
Thank you. Are there additional questions and/or comments? I, Counsel Takeus.
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe ask Chief Mason. Would it be possible to write, rewrite a code that maybe took, address some of those safety concerns? Maybe not allowing RVs within so many feet of an intersection or something like that? Just something to, I guess, to mull over. I don't know if it's possible or not, or that's just too complicated. Because I think there is, there is still that safety concern. But it does seem like there's not really the will to pass this at this time, so.
Chief, go ahead if you'd care to answer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, part of the, part of the reason I think that we don't go out and kind of like, I'll say heavy-handed, this is a word I'll use, we don't do heavy-handed parking enforcement currently because most of our streets don't have any markings indicating when you are too close to an intersection, right? We just, our, our Public Works Department has never had the budget for the curb painting. So now it leaves it up kind of to the discretion of both the person parking the car and the code enforcement officer that is either called to the intersection or is just out patrolling. So, I mean, so then you're down to actually measuring it out and determining whether or not they are within the, I believe it's 25 feet of an intersection, right? So if we were looking for a way to do safety improvements, probably one avenue would be to increase our paint budget and mark our intersections so that people clearly know where they aren't allowed to park. Because there's like a yellow curb where curb lines are available in our city. And that would be probably a lower impact way to get people. I don't think people are purposefully blocking intersections or visibility at intersections when they park. I think that they often don't know and, and, or just don't realize that they're too close. And, and it's, I think, difficult for us to go out and proactively make that enforcement contact. When it's hard for us to know too, like our code person, because they can't really see it. So the only way they would really even know is to get out and do some measurements. So that may be one avenue. The other is just often when this happens, it's a larger vehicle. And currently our size restrictions for parking on our streets has that one phrase that says connected combination of vehicles. And that's what's really prohibiting us from saying you can't park something that's really big on our city streets. And the complaints we were getting oftentimes weren't, I mean, honestly, at traffic safety, sometimes they were related to safety. But oftentimes they were related to the inconvenience of neighborhoods not having any available parking. Because it's all getting taken up by people parking their trailers or large vehicles in the residential streets. So currently, the only way we can enforce an oversized vehicle standard, which there is some in the current code, right? But it says that it has to be a connected combination. So even if those words were just taken away and we set a limit and said, nothing over, I mean, you choose the number. The current number is 23 feet. It says a connected combination that's over 23 feet long is too big to park on our city streets. But then if you leave a trailer that's 40 feet long, it's not connected to anything. And the way our code is written, we can't, we can't enforce that, right? We can't go out and ask that person not to do that. So that's really where the whole thing started. And Counselor Takeus, you were at all those meetings. You, you had the history and, and it was so long ago now that those people, you know, may or may not even be in town any longer. It's the, you know, the wheels turn slowly sometimes and we wanted to make sure we got it right. So I hope I answered your question. I'm not sure.
Maybe we can just, maybe we don't pass this one and go back and do a much more simplified one that cleans up the language. So you can better enforce what we have on the books.
And, and remove connected vehicles.
Right.
If that gives you more authority than to, to deal with what is actually the problem.
But then you would want to give me some guidance on how long is too long? Because I'm hearing travel trailers are okay on city streets and most travel trailers are going to be over that limit of 23 feet. When you measure it from tongue to tail.
So we may have an additional conversation. Counselor Roden, Counselor Roden, I think you were trying to say something. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for Chief Mason. And I'm just trying to visualize something so that, you may not have the answers to this. But there are two big storage trucks on, right, right beside the post office. In front of a, a small apartment that we have on, right beside the post office. They've been parked there, yeah, thank you, C Street. They've been parked there for about 10 days and they haven't moved. And none of the, I don't know if they belong to the residents who live there, but they're all the way up to the corner. And they're very long and they're very big. Doesn't existing code stop that from happening?
If it was within the intersection restriction, that would be the only code that, that would do that. I mean, it says any vehicle left over 72 hours becomes a vehicle that we can put a ticket on because it's being used for storage at that point. But we don't proactively do that. I mean, we generally respond to complaints on those when a vehicle's left for too long in one place. But as far as the size itself, Counselor Roden, that would be where that connected combination, it doesn't, it's not connected to anything. It's just one vehicle. And that's where we run into that problem because it says it has to be a connected combination.
Okay, I see. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Counselor Core.
If we remove the combined connected wordy in, in existing code and give you a one's limit to accompany that, has that accomplished essentially what this ordinance change would do? I mean, are we just essentially passing ordinance by changing language in the previous ordinance or previous code?
Yeah, this whole proposal was just a, you know, a rewrite or a change of existing code. It would do many of the things, but not all. Fred, do you have a comment on that? You really helped me write this whole thing, so.
Well, I, I mean, there's just, there's stuff in this too that, you know, once we got into the, the ordinance, it just kind of felt like it makes sense to address some of these things as well, like parking a dumpster, let's say, on a, a city street. So I mean, that's sort of the same sort of issue, you know, where it's a, it's a big sort of thing that might be out there temporarily. And so it sort of felt similar to a connected, the, the, the trailer language. So that's why that got brought up as well. You know, it's, basically, basically, once we were in there, it kind of felt like, well, we might as well address this issue too, because it's very, it looks very similar. Conceptually, it made sense to us that it, it was a similar sort of thing.
Okay. What I'd like to suggest is that we vote on this up or down. And then we can provide either staff or indoor traffic safety commission with some level of direction with how, how to proceed from there. Does anybody, Counselor Takeus?
So this is what my understanding is that, or this is kind of my feeling, is that we, you know, if we don't want to pass this, we should vote this down. And then come back and look at it maybe with some adjustments to, so that we're not too heavy-handed, you know, I guess it would, you know, and maybe it's just changing some of the lengths that we're talking about. But I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, I guess what I'm hearing is we probably should not pass this and let staff work on it and massage it a little bit. So, so, because there's a lot of other, like Fred said, there's a lot of things that clean up the code that we probably need to have in there. But it's not something that we could just, you know, make a, you know, amendment to and, and change it right now. I think it'd be better to be looked at more carefully, correct?
Counselor Takeus, you and I are of like mind on that. That was what I, you more eloquently than I with that.
I'm not sure about eloquent.
Hey, take the credit when you can. Any other comments? Okay.
Question.
Yes. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Counselor Core, yes?
Can I ask that the counselors each put their hand up when they're voting, so I can make sure that I get it recorded?
I, I was going to orally do that for you, but okay, that's, that's Counselor Core for, yes? Is there any other yeses? Okay, those in opposition, put your hand up, please, and I'll read them out. Counselor Morton, no. Counselor Jobe, no. Counselor Martin Willis, no. Counselor Takeus, no. Counselor Roden, how do you vote?
No.
Counselor Roden, no. Okay, the motion is defeated. Thank you. I appreciate people's helping us move through this. And I just want to remind everybody that may or may not be watching, that some of the earlier motions were process motions. And that's all they were. They were just process motions to move us forward. I'm going to let staff take what they've heard tonight, because I think there's some common areas that make some sense. You know, the whole dumpster thing and those kind of things. And come up with the, the things that we're not, we don't disagree with. And we may have to take this a little bit piece by piece. Does that make sense, Mr. Pesamir? Does that seem an approach?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think, you know, we can certainly go back through what we heard and, and take an attempt. And, and we still have the Traffic Safety Commission and we can certainly bring it back to council too for, for, for the consideration.
Great, thank you very much. And I want to tell counselors, I do appreciate the thoughtful way that this discussion took place, both this meeting and previous meetings. This is what we do and I really appreciate that. I'm going to keep us moving here. Mr. Irvine, I think you have the next one because we have a request for alcohol in the park. And that's on page 35. Mr. Irvine, I think it's to you.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
You're, you're echoing a wee bit. Try again, please. You're not coming through.
You might try it without video.
Try without video, Sean.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I came in and y'all, whoops.
You're okay.
Still skipping around on me, it looks like.
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, great. Then I'll just get going. So it's, I think, pretty straightforward, as you can see in the staff report. This is actually our first park reservation for Independence Landing Park down there in front of the apartments. The, kind of the two grassy areas with the little plaza area there. There's a, a couple that would like to have their wedding down there. Ordinarily would be handled by the regular parks reservation process, but in this case, they want to have a champagne toast, which requires the approval or at least the, the allowance of, of city council to, to proceed. So it's a pretty, like I say, a pretty straightforward situation as represented in the, the staff report. It's, I think, as far as, you know, first time in a new place goes, this is about as straightforward as it's going to get. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council for staff? If not, this is an action item, please.
Well, I'd be happy to take action on this because I think this is going to be the first of many other opportunities that people will take advantage of to get married in our beautiful amphitheater. I move to allow temporary use of alcohol for a private event, Fort Johnston Wedding in the area of Riverview Park, Independence Landing, as dedicated, as designated in their application.
I second.
And a second. A second from Counselor Roden. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And is there opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Pesamir, I think you have the next one on the F Street Bridge.
Yes, I'll, I'll be pretty quick. This is a pretty straightforward. The F Street Bridge project is coming along well. It's actually out for bid right now. So the design effort is pretty much finished up. And we're going to move towards the construction phase of the project. One of the things that we did originally was had OTAC through a public bidding process win the award to design the bridge and the design services for that was $365,528. If you remember right, this, this project is about 90% funded by a NODOT grant. The other 10% is coming from the city. But now we need to move on to construction management for the project that typically goes to the firm who designed it. Sometimes it doesn't, but in bridge projects, it's really important because of all the structural components. That amount, the total amount, the additional amount is $158,109. So the total amount would be $523,637. That was always planned for the project, is in the project budget for a similar amount. I will say that we did have originally a 15% contingency on the design services. That was not used by OTAC. So we've dropped that from the amount for your consideration. So this is really just to help us move the project forward and amend their existing contract to provide construction management services.
Questions for the manager? I don't see anybody flagging a question. This is an action item, please.
I move to, to award the amendment to the contract for designing construction management services to OTAK Engineering for the F Street Bridge project in the amount of $158,109 and authorize the city manager or their designee to sign the contract and other related arguments, documents.
Documents, there you go.
I second, I second that motion.
Yeah, I think it's more fun to have documents than arguments. So, and there's a second by Counselor Jobe. Is there further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And is there opposition? There is no opposition. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's go to general council announcements. Are there general council announcements at this point?
I would like to make some.
Please do.
I'm sure everybody knows, but there was a engineering look, relook at the bridge that goes over the Lemon River on River Road. And I've talked to the farms down there and they said that the new weight limit that they increased after that new engineering has been, is great enough so that they can continue their harvest and continue to do their work on the other side. So I'm pretty happy that Tom wrote the letters and that everybody worked so hard and was really concerned about getting that changed. I'm really happy that that happened. And my other thing is, is, is it possible for us to discuss potentially more money for the ballpark for this fiscal budget? Or is that something we would discuss tomorrow night?
That's a budget committee disc, Tom?
Yes, that's correct. We, we can't discuss items outside of the budget committee process. If you, if you remember correctly, we'll have a budget committee. The budget committee will make a, an action on the budget and then it will come back to council. So there'll be still a couple more opportunities to, to talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
If there-
I had, I have one more thing. I just wanted to bring up, there was some correspondence with Natasha. And it was kind of going back and forth and, and people weren't, because I saw Counselor Core, I saw Counselor Roden. And then I saw Counselor Martin Willis. And I just, I had to call Tom because I wanted to know exactly what the protocol was. So I just wanted to, I guess, bring that up again and maybe Tom can-
Tom, could you clarify?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really important that counselors remember that when they're responding, it's perfectly acceptable and responsible unless it's a land use hearing or quasi judicial type of meeting to communicate with constituents and residents. But when you start communicating with counselors, even if you're just doing it to one, but another one does it to another and another does it to another, then all of a sudden you can end up, you know, creating a meeting outside of the, the public view. So just, you know, keep in mind that, you know, a lot of times a resident will send an email to the entire council. And just be cautious about how you forward that or answer that because sometimes inadvertently you can do something that you didn't mean to do.
Do not use reply all.
So I have a question. I have a question about that then. Thank you, Counselor Joe, for bringing that up because I was confused about that myself. So when I spoke to Natasha, I thought I was just speaking to Natasha and Counselor Core, which would have just been one-on-one with me and Counselor Core. So when Natasha replied all or forwarded it to every member of council, whose responsibility is it then?
Well, you know, technically, you know, now all of a sudden there, there's multiple counselors on, on an email. there there's multiple counselors on on an email. So I I can look into that further. I don't think I have an answer for you directly, Counselor Roden. Because, you know, I'm not sure that that would be considered a serial meeting. We could certainly talk to our our legal counsel on that. But I I guess the the caution is just be careful, so.
Let me, let me ask you that since it came up and it, Councilor. I know Counselor Roden, Counselor Roden emailed me and we included Natasha in that conversation. So that was clearly not a serial meeting. Was Natasha's email sent to the city staff as well? I don't recall who got it.
Yeah, I think, and this is the problem, is, you know, you can't be certain who who all is going to be be seeing certain things, so.
I'm looking at an email right now and Karen and Fred were on it.
Yeah, I I honestly don't think that the actions that taken place here constituted a serial meeting or the way that happened. I I guess the caution is to be careful.
I appreciate Counselor Jobe's comment, though, is that we need, somebody needs to police this apparently. So I think when something like this comes out, or this happens again, then I think maybe either Karen or some city staffer needs to weigh in immediately and kind of establish the rules of engagement. I mean, I think we're all trying to do the right thing and be careful, but you're absolutely right. This could have, this could have snowballed into something really bad.
I I think what the mayor said basically, don't reply all is where it would stop. So I think that we're okay as long as we don't reply all.
But Natasha did reply all and I feel like Counselor Core and I should be able to have a one on one discussion because that's legal. And then, you know, I should be able to respond to a constituent and I don't want to have to fear my response being sent out and violating communication codes because that's that's what happened. Counselor Core and I were totally on the right and didn't expect everything to go back. And so I'm, I am, I'm hesitant because I want it to be clear that we didn't initiate that communication to everybody. So I I can't see that Core or I would be in any spot liable for this.
And correct. And and the header in the email would show who who sent that. So no, you would not be found on an ethics violation because it, what matters is the source of the communication. Not the fact that a third party forwarded it.
Right. So Mr. Pesamir and I are going to work with our legal counsel. We're going to have a, we may have a little bit of additional training session in there because there they, because I think that there are some nuances. When I'm in doubt, before I do anything, I contact our our city folks to help make sure I'm I'm doing what needs to be done in the correct way. So Mr. Pesamir, so you and I will work with council on, but we may have a little bit of a training session. Is that okay?
That sounds great, yeah.
Because that would be helpful because of, these are legitimate questions and everybody's trying to do the right thing and everybody, it looks like, did the right thing in this. But we're just trying to make sure we're just careful in the future.
Yeah, it would be a, excuse me, it would be a good idea also to make sure that some of the other boards and commissions have this same kind of training or same kind of information disseminated to them.
Yes, thank you. It's a good idea. Since there's nothing else, I don't see, yes, please, Martin Willis.
Thank you, because I've had this sticky note on my desk a couple things I wanted to to share with with council and with and with our community as well. So back on, I think it was the seventh of the month, I had the opportunity to have a guided tour of the new Union Gospel Mission building right across the street from the Salem, New Salem Police Department. And I bring it up because there are actually a lot of folks from Polk County who are served by them. I, I am embarrassed to say how ignorant I was of the breadth and depth of services that UGM offers to our communities. So in July, I'll keep you apprised of the date, they will be having their grand opening. This is a 52,000 square foot facility. It will double the number of beds that they have available. It will double the number of people they are able to feed in a setting, in or in a single seating. And they'll be able to provide trade trade services, job training, education to even more people than they serve now. So I will say, speaking for myself, that the next time I get a UGM envelope in the mail, it will never again go into recycling. So that was the one thing. The second thing that I wanted to acknowledge is that the month of May was additionally Mental Health Awareness Month. And as the, you know, the month winds down here, I just, I want, I want to have that acknowledgement. And I was made aware of the fact that one in four adults between the ages of 18 and 25 have at some point considered suicide. And the pandemic only makes that worse. And so for our folks that happen to be listening in, if you're struggling now or at any time during this pandemic, the phone number for Polk County Mental Health is 503-623-9289. Please do not be embarrassed or ashamed to seek help. That's it for me. Thank you.
Counselor Core.
Um, they missed it. Mamba City Council passed a climate resolution last week. So I'm looking forward to talking to sitting as a pesamir and sitting in the line and figuring out this joint committee mission board, whatever we wind up calling it.
Great. Okay, if someone would say the word adjourn, we could do this.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a pleasant evening. Good night.